Yeah, that's great.
It's a beautiful building.
Anybody shaking their head? Okay, I think we're gonna go back to announcements.
Yes. So, we have our legislative delegation here, Senator Seer and Representative Fernandez. And first off, I think that we have a special citation that they are going to present to an individual. And I think what we would like to do is our usual way of the board members and myself come up front. And if you two and the individual perhaps could come down on maybe this side, you could present over here. And then we're something of a receiving line.
Okay.
And you're gonna give the bio on the individual?
Yes.
It's very simple.
And I would say try to speak into the mic.
Sure. Well, sorry, we're a little late. We got caught up at a chamber meeting. Great to be back on island. Thank you guys for having us and look forward to chatting about any issues. Oh, there's the agenda right there. Looking forward to chatting about those issues. But before we do that, we really want to take this time to recognize the captain with us this evening. He served in Nantucket for 32 years or served on the steamship for over 32 years, making the trek back and forth. We're, all islanders are incredibly reliant on that service. You really supply the lifeline for Nantucketers. And it really helped us out, too. Makes it a lot easier. So, thank you so much for your dedicated service to the island community. And we both have State House citations here for your leadership on the steamship. And this one's from the House of Representatives in recognition of your dedicated service as captain for the Steamship Authority and tireless efforts in guiding Nantucketers home for the past 32 years. And I think it's worth noting, this is from the Massachusetts Legislature. It's signed by the Speaker of the House and myself. And Julian has one from the Senate as well. And we, I think it's worth recognizing that in Massachusetts, we have the longest-serving legislature, the longest-serving democracy in world history. So, this will forever be enshrined in the State House. And it's just an honor to be here today to present to you and thank you for your service. Thank you. Thank you so much.
It's just great to be able to recognize people who, you know, the Angan Sun people who make a real difference in this community. And Dylan stood my usual line about the Massachusetts Legislature being the oldest continually-serving legislative body in the world. But these citations actually go into that record. So, you, well, you were already part of history, but now you're enshrined in history on Beacon Hill for as long as we have a Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So, Captain, just congratulations and thank you and wishing you an exciting and restful retirement.
Well, thank you so much. It's quite an honor. Of course.
Yeah.
Yeah. Captain, come here. Right there. Go there, Dylan, you go here and I'll come here.
Show off the hardware.
Yeah. No, we'll, yeah, we'll, we're on a road show today, so we can, we can go every, you know, we can go every other. Do you want to start? Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Something I've been talking about for a while to get you guys to come every, twice a year, every quarter, just to kind of give us an update of everything you're doing in the state.
Well, thank you. I think Dylan and I, as we do in all of our work, we'll really, we'll really tag-team this. We were actually just over at a Nantucket Chamber event. And earlier today, we're participating in a Behavioral Task Force meeting. You know, now that we're at the end of the legislative session, we've also been wanting to take stock of what we've been able to deliver for the island. And we feel that that's been significant. So, we've been able to provide over $1.8 million in local funding priorities for the island of Nantucket, including $200,000 to the town for coastal resiliency planning in the changing, you know, in changing environment. That is critical. We've both continued to secure ongoing funding for off-island medical transportation, which really is a significant challenge for islanders receiving medical care, over $130,000 for that. Shelf fish propagation, which Dylan's led in the House. How much is coming? A hundred and?
So, it's a total of 350 for Barnstable Dukes and Nantucket Counties. But they don't split that up by population size, they split that up by counties. So, you guys get a third of that. I think that's 116-ish, if I'm math right now, is semi-correct. So, around there.
Yep.
So, over a hundred grand on shelf fish propagation.
And in economic development bond bill that was passed in the legislature, $1.2 million is appropriate, is authorized for Nantucket for repairs to the pier, an additional $300,000 to the Dreamland Foundation for ongoing design and expansion there. Another issue we've worked extensively from constituents concerning the squid fishery south of the island and the small, the use of small mesh nets, which have been pretty problematic. We filed legislation on that, were not able to get much traction. But I actually filed an earmark in the budget for $20,000 mandating that the Division of Marine Fisheries study that fishery, and particularly the bycatch. So, we're hoping that this is gonna give us some good data to address that more broadly related to island-specific issues that have been of real importance. Worked very closely with the Nantucket Chamber and their executive director, David Martin, on changing how the state allocates tourism funding. Sort of regret, we got a $41 billion state budget. Only 10 million of that is for tourism promotion, which is a pretty paltry sum, given how critical tourism is to this island, to the, to all the communities we represent. But we changed the funding formula to make sure that they get those dollars up front so they can actually do some real planning around tourism promotion. We'll continue to work on that. In the budget that came out, there's a sheriff's funding commission. We made sure that there's a carve-out and that the needs of the sheriff here on island and also on Martha's Vineyard are looked at distinctly for geographic isolation.
I just, well, it's on sheriffs. The governor cut the Nantucket Sheriff's budget by $100,000 and then we, the legislature overwrote him on that piece and restored the $100,000 for Jim.
Yeah, we always like to make sure we're looking out for Jim. Actually, in the FY19 budget, there's some really significant investments in education, over $4.9 billion. It's the highest level of funding we ever had, highest level. We're at 75% reimbursement for special ed costs. There's also a new rural aid school formula that was led by Adam Hines and my colleague from the Berkshires and the Berkshire delegation in the House. But that Dylan and I supported, that's gonna mean more money for Nantucket schools as well. And then there's a significant investment in regional transit authorities, which will benefit, you know, the island here, an unprecedented level of substance misuse and prevention work. And then we were also able to secure Minnesota, if you talk to your police chief and police chiefs across the Commonwealth, a real priority for police chiefs have been trying to find a stable revenue stream for Minnesota police training. I led the effort in the House. Dylan teamed up with it and, or I led it in the Senate. He's in the House. We're gonna get this passed, it's gonna mean over $10 million in Minnesota police training every year. So, when your police department has new recruits, that training will now be paid for by the state. So, it's really a savings there. What did I leave out as far as state accomplishments?
Well, there's, I mean, you went through a lot of them. And I just want to echo on the police training piece. You know, this is something that's been a priority for the police chiefs for, you know, going on like two decades now. And Julian led the charge in the Senate, was the first to get it passed. And then the House really followed on his leadership. So, it's just amazing work. There was $50,000 for mental health and substance misuse on the island. I think a portion of that's already been released. And that's split over two fiscal years. And so, we re-upped it this year again. And that's, you know, to support a lot of the efforts here. We came earlier from a Behavioral Task Force meeting, so kind of engaging the public health and mental health agencies on the mental health issues here in particular. Issues of suicide on island is something that we worked on as well. There's a couple other island-specific pieces. One, I see, you know, it's mentioned up there, marijuana law changes. We got an amendment into the marijuana bill for Martha's Vineyard and Nantucket. You know, it's really rare to have any sort of kind of town carve-out in a statewide piece of legislation. But we got a piece in particular for Nantucket, that the Cannabis Control Commission has to issue special regulations toward, for Nantucket and Martha's Vineyard because of the unique geography of the islands and the kind of implications around transporting a product that's still illegal on the federal levels through federal air, well, federal air and water that is partially regulated by the federal government as well. So, that's another piece. And maybe we can remember some other stuff as we're going on.
Home rules.
Oh, boy. Okay. Well, I get the home rules now.
Well, no.
So, how much time do you have? So, we, I represent nine communities. And we've, and in those nine communities, we have, I think, 14, maybe 13 home rules. And nine of them are from Nantucket, so, you know.
It's different here.
Yeah, yeah. It's so special. And, you know, I will say, I will say, Cuddy Hunk hasn't filed a home rule. I'm just saying. And, no, we're just joking. So, a quick update on that. Of the nine, five have already passed the House. Four have already been signed into law. So, you have the four kind of land transfer pieces, those were signed into law. One, we actually, so, on the last night of the legislative session, we got a call, we had already passed one of them through the House. We got a call, a call from the governor's office saying they needed to change it. And even though we already passed it through the House, then we had to file it again and get it passed within, you know, the last 30 minutes remaining before the end of the session. So, that was, that was fun. And so, those four pieces are all through and signed into law. We have the piece on the mosquito regulation change, that already passed the House. Julian's gonna get it passed through the Senate, shouldn't be an issue. Ticking through the other ones, there's the water merger piece. That has been sitting in third reading for a very long time now. And we just got, we haven't moved on it because we got word from folks on island that they don't want to move on it. So, we've just held it in third reading and we still haven't gotten further guidance on whether they want to move it or not. So, we're just, you know, we're just holding it. So, that's not going anywhere because you guys don't want it to go anywhere. Then there's the housing covenant piece. That is, of the nine home rules that we filed, that you guys set up, that's the only one that did not make it out of committee. That got sent to a study order, essentially killing it, you know.
And which one was that? Just so people.
So, that is the housing, that is the housing covenant one, the one for, so, being able to basically transfer to a family member, right? So, that's something, I met with the chairman of housing on that. We actually brought up Ann Kutsba to meet with the chairman of housing as well. You know, we're gonna send a letter this week, it might have actually already gone out, to the chairman to try and get it, get it released from the committee. So, it's not to say that it's totally dead, but generally when bills are sent to study, it's hard to get them released out. The chairman, although when we met with him, was actually fairly supportive of it. They're a little nervous about it possibly being precedent-setting. And so, that, I think, is the reason why it's there. But we'll, we'll work in the next kind of month to get a real answer on why it's being held up. And then we can work together, either in the coming months or next session, because I know it's a priority. But, you know, one for, one out of nine is actually, is actually pretty good. So, to tick through the other ones, there's, so there's the transfer fee, right, for the housing bank. This is something that our office, our office has spent more time on this piece of legislation than any other piece of legislation that we filed. And there's around 20 pieces. This piece is in third reading at the moment. It's been in third reading for a while now. And just for folks, so, we've got, third reading's the last committee before it passes the House. So, we got it through two other committees really early on, it's sitting in the final committee before it passes. We've had a group of Nantucketers up to the State House to meet with the chairman of third reading, Ted Spiliotis. He's actually said to us that he supports the legislation. And so, then we had, but then he couldn't move it because he's getting direction from the speaker on this. And so, then we had a group up to meet with the speaker of the House, Robert DeLeo, on the measure. And that was a productive conversation about, and both times, it was a great showing from Nantucket, about six members from the community. Both times came up and sat in a room and really were amazing advocates for the island and specifically this bill. I've then had a follow-up meeting with the speaker on this. So, it's the, so I, you know, we'll see what happens. I don't have a good answer on whether it's gonna pass or not. But I will say that we have gone to bat on this thing. You know, we've gone to the mat and it's, if it doesn't pass this year, I think we really need to revisit it because we've engaged every stakeholder that there is. You know, folks from, you know, prominent islanders have weighed in. We've sent several letters from folks on island. We've engaged the Island Realtors Association on this. You know, we've had several meetings with House leadership on this. This is, this is something we've really pushed on. And the reason that it hasn't gone anywhere is because with any kind of home rule petition, what holds them up generally is, one, if they're setting a new precedent in the state. And this actually does do that. But, two, what's really holding it up, and the other thing that holds up home rule petitions is if there is opposition. Because usually it's just one town, a home rule petition is one town, right? And so, usually it's non-controversial bills. This bill is very much opposed by the Massachusetts Association of Realtors. It's even on their literature that they hand out, their statewide literature has a little section of opposing this home rule on Nantucket on it. And so, that is the holdup. My, you know, what, I plan to continue to push for it. And we have a couple other pieces, a couple other ways to advocate for this that we haven't exhausted yet, that we're gonna do in the next couple of months. And if this doesn't go through this session, I plan on filing a statewide piece of legislation for a, very similar actually to your land bank transfer fee, but for a housing bank. And I plan on filing a statewide local option and just, I'm gonna go to them and say, look, if you guys don't let Nantucket do this, I'm gonna like engage all my colleagues on a statewide piece of legislation on this and, and hopefully, you know, and hopefully that threat will.
Dylan, what's the timeframe on the current bill? Like, in two months, if nothing moves, then we move on.
So, it's the session, right? So, it's by January 1st. Yep. And so, a lot of home rules, you know, right now is when home rules pass. Because right now, it, you know, it's the, it's the one time of year where all the kind of non-contentious legislation goes through. Because in informal session, you only need one legislator to object. And so, they usually save a lot of the home rule petitions. You know, some pass during the year, but a lot are saved towards the end when you can kind of hammer, hammer these out and you don't need a vote of the legislative body. You do need a two-thirds for all of the transfer fees. You do need to pass those in formal, in a formal session because that requires a two-thirds vote of the legislature. And those have all passed.
Is there anything that we could be doing better differently, whether it's elected officials, public, community?
Yeah, so, on this, on the transfer fee, no. I mean, we have, we've, Nantucket's been terrific. I mean, I, really. And folks have dedicated days of their lives to advocating for this. And so, I, you know, if we think of something, we'll absolutely reach out and ask. But you guys have been terrific and I'm hopeful.
But on that point, in the next couple of months, we're gonna be discussing articles to go on the annual town meeting. One is the adding, the adding back home rule petitions. And we may want, if you, especially if you're thinking about another approach, or maybe we need to think about another approach, we should really have a conversation about whether we want to include that in this, in the annual town meeting next year.
Yeah. I would love to talk with you guys.
Yeah.
Pre the home rules being proposed. I think that would be helpful. It's helpful for us.
It's almost like what could, what could pass? We've tried this for a few years.
And, yeah, yeah. And so, I think, I think if it doesn't go this year, you know, you guys have been sending this up for maybe close to a decade, right? And, or iterations of it for a very long time. And so, this is, this, this year, and I know my predecessor, Tim Madden, worked really hard on this piece. And we, I think, really pushed for it this, this, over the past two years. And if it doesn't make it through, I think we, we should kind of, we should at least convene and talk about it and talk about what, what folks want to do. And look, I'm happy to keep filing it as long as you guys keep electing me. But, but I think it's worth a conversation to, to just chat about maybe revisiting some of, some of the language. The only other piece that I'll mention, just to round out the home rule petitions, is the, the membership change to the Nantucket Planning and Economic Development Commission. That has already made it through two committees as well and is sitting in third reading. So, that's, this is pretty non-controversial. I don't really see a problem with the, yeah.
I think on the, the housing bank, and Dylan and his team have been so dogged and persistent in this. This bill, you know, just from my perspective, has gone a heck of a lot further than I imagined it going. And so, Dylan really should be applauded to the, you know, the House is, I think, the barrier here. Or we have to get it out of the House before it comes to the Senate. Hence why Dylan's giving the update on the home rules. He has to do all the hard work first. I do think, though, that, and how I've been talking about this on the Hill, is, you know, the, the Nantucket Housing Land Bank bill, you know, this isn't the only strategy that the town is pursuing. And I think really making the argument that this is part of the solution. I think that, and it's a good, a good segue and transition actually into talking about short-term rental legislation. Some conversation in other towns I represent, actually in my hometown of Truro, they're, they're significantly talking about bringing something to their fall town meeting about actually dedicating 2% of their local option. That is likely to come with a, with a home rule, with this, I'm sorry, that's gonna come with expansion of short-term rentals and dedicating 2% of that to housing. You know, so, so I think that what, what is most helpful in the argument we've been trying to make on the Hill is like, look, this isn't, you know, we need this transfer fee. We, we're gonna need some sort of direct appropriations from the town. We're gonna need, you know, other sort of pieces as well. And, you know, because the, the need is so significant. So, I think that's just something to, that I'm hearing and to keep in mind. So, related to a long-term desire, and speaking of home rules, you folks have passed expansion of, of short-term rentals several time at town, at town meetings. So, too, have several other communities that, that I represent across the Cape and Islands District. And I think really thanks to that persistence, right? This is an issue that, you know, our colleague, Sarah Peake, who's now in her, going into her 11th term in the legislature, not 11th, 11th year or 12th year in the legislature, not 11th term, you know, she's been sort of working for over a decade there because of the persistence of towns like Nantucket and the Cape and Islands delegation. And also because of how Airbnb and other platforms have now been interacting with the real estate market in Boston. You know, you had the Boston delegation as well concerned about this. So, both in the, both the House and the Senate passed bills this last session. Usually the Senate is sort of more granular and regulatory. It was the House, actually, this time, that was kind of, had more, more requirements. The Senate was a little less full of regulatory requirements. There was a conference committee, a conference report came out at the end of the session and both chambers passed and voted on and passed the conference report of a final bill and sent it to the governor's desk. That includes 5% state across-the-board occupancy. So, whether you're a hotel, a motel, Airbnb, or a short-term rental, any rental of 30 days or less is taxed. They also add, included in that is the local option, just like we have under the existing motel and hotel occupancy, towns can opt to have 2%, 4%, or up to 6%. That's there as well. Also included in this is a registry where publicly accessible information is on, online and information that consumers can look up as it relates to where these rentals are. There, there are some criteria for inspections and town-related action. And there's also a requirement for a certain level of homeowner's insurance and a certain level of liability insurance, which, which I think could impact some, some renters. The other piece in this and where my office and I have focused on extensively is using this bill as a vehicle to meaningfully address the wastewater challenges that we face. Yes, here on Nantucket, on Martha's Vineyard, and particularly on Cape Cod, the 15 Cape Cod towns are under court-ordered action and a court-sanctioned agreement, which is called the 208 Plan, which is a $4 billion plan to clean up estuaries and embayments across the 15 towns on Cape Cod, approved by USCPA, approved by Governor Baker and Mass DEP. And also a party to this is the Conservation Law Foundation that brought the suit. So, with this $4 billion problem we have on Cape Cod, the state had committed a billion dollars for, that they were gonna put a billion towards this $4 billion problem. You know, and our job as legislators, which a big chunk of that is as appropriators, you know, you think, where the heck am I gonna get a billion dollars, right? This isn't an earmark you can insert into a budget. You know, a billion dollars is about the size of the bond authorizations we do for various, on various areas. So, we led a process with the entire Cape and Islands delegation, including local chambers, environmental groups, and municipal leaders, and a whole iterative process to come up with what is now a Cape and Islands Water Protection Fund. The goal of the fund was to create a repository where we could generate monies through room occupancy, potentially other future federal sources that the state couldn't, and the legislature couldn't sort of stick our sticky fingers into and redirect that money at a later date, not wanting to create a new bureaucracy, not wanting to create an MWA for Cape Cod and the islands. And so, we came up on this fund, which is a subset of the existing state revolving loan fund program administered by the Treasurer's Office and in consultation with DEP, that I think you folks are probably well familiar with and that you've worked with all the time. So, this is a subset fund. It's funded by a 2.75% additional fee surcharge on all occupancy on Nantucket, Martha's Vineyard, and Cape Cod. And so, that goes into a set-aside fund. The fund is additive for existing SRF resources. So, they can't take away the existing resources that we get. It's, it uses the same criteria as SRF, right? So, we're using a very numbers-based sort of non, a de-politicized, you know, decision-making around projects. Yes, it funds traditional pipes and pumps, but it also funds alternative methods. It also provides resources and it could fund Title V upgrades. If it, basically if it relates to cleaning up estuaries and embayments, you can receive funding for it. Also, it enables that you can use the resources to pay down existing debt. So, Nantucket, as well as Providence, Chatham, Falmouth, and Barnstable, Oak Plus, Edgar Town, and Tisbury have already put existing resources into some sort of sewer ring. They can refinance the debt through this. Both Dylan and I fought very hard to make sure that Nantucket and also the six-island towns on Martha's Vineyard had a chance to come in to the fund. One being that, you know, you folks face very similar challenges as the Cape does. You're not under court action. And I think we both really worried that we'd get a fix for Cape Cod and then, you know, a few years down the road at a subsequent select board meeting, whether we were in these positions or. at a, a subsequent select board meeting, whether we were in these positions or, or whoever succeeds us. You know, you'd be asking, hey, can we get into this? So wanting to make sure that Nantucket has a real, an option to come in. Also, the more money you put into the fund, the bigger the pot, the more you can finance and it benefits everyone. And so this has been, you know, supported and passed in both chambers. It has the support of the Baker-Polito administration as well. So currently, so the bill, as I said, so this is part of the broader Airbnb bill. This was a subset of it. Sent to the governor's desk. The governor sent back several, what I would consider relatively friendly amendments to the bill. One provides an exemption for 14 days. You rent 14 days or less, you're not subject to the tax. Another tweaks and changes how the registry works. You know, there's, there's some concerns with it, but broadly, you know, broadly keeps the spirit of the bill. Personally, I don't have a problem with these amendments. I actually supported some of these amendments when we were voting, when we were actually debating the bill. But the House lead, Aaron Michaelowitz, who represents the North End, does have some, 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 some challenges and problems with it. So unclear what's going to happen. We can, we could, if we accept the governor's amendments, then we'd send the bill back to his desk and he would sign it into law. If we would reject them, the, the bill essentially dies. There was an editorial last week in the Boston Globe really saying, pass, you know, pass this Airbnb bill. I, I'm, I'm sort of uncertain of where, from a Senate perspective, we don't have a problem with these amendments. I'm sort of uncertain what's going to happen specifically with, you know, but whether or not this passes this session or is something that when we come back and reconvene in January, you know, and is passed either through, likely probably as, as part of the FY '20 budget. You know, this is something that, that's going to happen. We already have a framework for what, what the agreement is. And the really good news on that Cape and Islands Water Protection Fund is everyone thinks that's a really good idea. There's a lot of broad support. You know, thank you to, to, to members of the board and to Libby and the town staff, who really provided some very helpful feedback on that. So this is going to happen, I think, more likely than not, because we're getting into, you know, this, had the bill been signed into law immediately, it would have gone into effect in January 2019. I think increasingly, as we get closer to that date, it's, it's, you know, there's some questions around, you know, when that's phased in. But I think broadly, this is something that's going to come and going to happen. So whether it's in, starting in 2019 or then in 2020, we will have this. For Nantucket, that means just in the home rule alone, just rather on the local option alone. And I believe you're at 6% now. I would hazard a guess that you're going to see a doubling of, of that resources even more. I mean, you have significant, you know, every home that's rented for five, 10, whatever, $1,000 a week in the summer is going to be subject to that local option. And so I think, you know, would encourage you folks to think about, you know, what, where those resources will, will be applied to. Don, did you have a question?
Yeah, we've already talked about trying to slate that money specifically towards housing and, and infrastructure that's necessary to provide the services for the vacationing population.
Yeah.
And I was just going to say that I really thought that the governor's changes were appropriate and I hope that it will get passed, if that helps. And there have been a lot of questions about the implementation though. But so January, would it be, it would be leases written after January 1st, 19, or potentially?
Currently, as, as the bill's written, leases that are signed and executed before November 1st, 2018, are not subject to the tax. We're getting pretty close to that date.
Yeah.
So I, 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 I don't exactly know. I think now, I think it's less likely than more likely that the House accepts this. What I just sort of don't get is I'm like, accept the amendment, then if you want to come back and change it, you know, we come in, in January and we have two-thirds majorities. I mean, we can, we can essentially dictate what we want. You know, not, not sure if that's going to happen. I think from a town, from the town planning perspective, you know, uncertain when, when those dollars are going to start flowing. But I think it is really prudent to really think about, you know, this is going to be significant, significant dollars for Nantucket. And actually, for all the communities, the nine communities don't represent, the 20 I do, it's probably going to be the most substantial form of, of state aid in, in an effect that's going to come. You know, dollars that are raised in your community come right back to your community with no strings attached. That is very, very significant. It's probably going to be the largest sum we'll see of that for quite some time.
So that, that is the, the 6%, right? The local option?
That's the 6% local option.
The 2.75, that's going into the bigger fund. How does that get allocated?
So that's allocated through the exist, first and foremost, the existing SRF criteria that exists. So, so projects are scored, just like they're scored now. And then there's a management board that every single town has a seat on that is tasked with equitable distribution of the funds. In a prior iteration of the bill, we actually said, you know, every town, you know, a dollar in, you know, Nantucket at least has to get back the money that's raised on Nantucket for the project. That doesn't, as legal counsel may know, that doesn't work legally. That's kind of considered a Ponzi scheme. So, so we structured this management board whose, you know, primary responsibility is to ensure equitable distribution. Given that all the towns are going to have an interest in this, we're hopeful that, that won't be too much of an issue. Every town has an equal vote on the board. And so if you just, politically, if you add up, if, if the six Martha's Vineyard towns come in, Nantucket, and then I would argue, you know, the outer, the four or five outer Cape towns, which really have much more of an interest and aligned with the challenges that you folks have, than on the mid-Cape, you'd actually have a majority of the board.
So we should start making friends.
Yeah. Or they should start making friends with you, because I think Nantucket, Nantucket will certainly be up there along with probably Chatham, Provincetown and Barnstable for the, for the largest generator of those resources. So that's that. We talked about the housing bank. Marijuana, were there anything, was there anything specific about marijuana law changes?
Julie, yep, sorry, just skip back for one second. You mentioned something about with the, one of the amendments being bumping the occupants of time back up to 90 days, that there'd be some sort of wording protecting seasonal workers?
So that's a concern that, that, one of the small concerns we do have with the governor's amendment. I mean, my preference would be to, to accept it and then go back and fix.
Okay.
Because there, there is a concern with seasonal workers and, and nine, and not wanting to, you know, not, not wanting to adversely impact them. We see a lot of that, you know.
Do you have wording in mind or once, if it did come back as a future possible amendment?
I think we would make sure to, to clearly exempt any, any housing related to seasonal employment activities. I believe, and I, I believe the language as written refers to housing provided by employers for seasonal workforce. Not all seasonal workers are housed in housing that's provided by their employers. So I think we need something a little more flexible and expansive. But Sarah Peake has been, who actually was on the conference committee. Sarah Peake's the state representative from the outer Cape and, and is in leadership actually in the House. She's looking very closely at that to make sure we don't, we don't see an adverse impact there. And, and often with these larger bills, we often have to go back and make smaller technical fixes. And this is what would be considered a small technical, not small, but I don't, I don't mean insignificant, but something we can fix in a technical manner.
I wouldn't be that worried about the 90-day period because most people require, if you're renting to, to summer, you know, summer employment, it's 100, 120-day season.
Yeah, the seasons alike.
Yeah, they, they want four or five months, you know, or 90 days, I think most of them are well over 90. If you're renting a house, they're not going to rent it to you just for a short period. You know, and the other thing is the 14 days, that mimics the, and I know people that, the federal exemption, which, you know, some people take very, take advantage of it, let's shall we say. They rent their houses for 14 days for a ton of money to various companies that their friends own and et cetera, et cetera. It's a way to bring money, you know, it's a way to bring tax-free money in, which is pretty interesting.
Yeah.
But, so that's why that's probably not going very far.
So then on.
Well, I just had, and Julie.
No, try and, sorry.
Worked really hard on this and it was amazing getting it through the Senate really early on. But the only other piece, and it was mentioned about the allocation of the 6%. Don, you talked about housing. And that I think, if, if this transfer fee does not go through, that I think we can revisit about, you know, creating a pot for that through, through this, if and, if and when. And it will go through eventually. We just don't know the timing on that. And so we'll just keep an eye on it and stay in, it'd be great to stay in touch, pre-town meeting and, and your guys' schedule for home rules.
And you said we could propose two, four or six.
Yep.
As a local, because there are some concerns with the tax getting too large.
You already have 6% and the law is written in a way that the existing local option you have just extends to short-term rentals. So there's no vote that, you don't have, there's no vote at town meeting. I actually don't think the law will allow you to have a bifurcated rate. So there's, it's an equitable rate. So if you wanted to lower that rate, you know, some towns may consider, you know, they're at 6% now. You know, they're, they're going to lower it to, to 4% because they're going to get so much more money.
Across the board.
You know, I, I think given the, given the need that you folks have to create multiple streams for housing, you know, I, I think, I think the, the fact that the board is considering allocating some of this new money that comes in or a certain percentage of that is really prudent. And, and I would argue too that, you know, that you folks need that in addition to this transfer fee, in addition to maybe some, some direct appropriations akin to how Provincetown is funded there, their, their housing bank, right? That the need is so significant, you know, you need kind of, you likely need multiple streams to really prop up something as big and significant as I think you're hoping to do.
So when this passes, it will, it be an automatic?
Automatic.
13.75?
Yep.
Okay, I just wanted to, I, I don't think people are necessarily clear on that.
Sorry, so they, they wouldn't.
Including the 2.75?
It wouldn't automatically be, sorry, it'd be an automatic 11. And then you would opt in on the 2.75. The islands, so the islands, Nantucket and the seven towns in Dukes County opt into the 2.75. For Barnstable County and the 15 or so towns there, they don't opt in. They actually have to opt out.
Okay.
But how?
And by town meeting vote, we opt in?
No, no.
Or we each decide?
By, by your legislative, like, you, you, by the select board can opt in. And it's actually just, the opt-in criteria is to, working with DEP to establish what's called a suitable equivalent plan to a 208 plan. Essentially, the existing Clean Water Plan that you're working on with DEP is going to qualify for that. I think if there's a, so, so, so we actually were planning to actually bring DEP to the island to begin working on this right away, because we don't have a bill, there's, you know, they're sort of in waiting. It's designed, that 208 criteria is frankly designed to make the, the fund protective from sort of off-Cape Cod and Island interests wanting to get in. But the barrier for you folks to enter should be very low. If you don't want to be in it, then you just don't work with DEP. But that's something that's handled at the town level, does not need to go before town meeting. So I think, did you folks have other questions on marijuana? Because we did housing bank, we did.
Plastic bag.
Plastic bags, the Senate passed a ban.
Plastic bans, plastic bans.
The Senate passed, passed a plastic bag ban. The House wouldn't accept it. And you guys can pass all the local home rules you want on that.
Oh, can I add on this?
Yeah, please do, please do.
So it, I'm very supportive of plastic bag bans, co-sponsor of the bill. And I, I just think it's really unfortunate the House didn't allow that to go through. But not plastic bags. In, in the United States, there are four towns that have banned single-use plastic water bottles. And all four of them are in Massachusetts. And you don't need to go through the legislature to do that. So just plastic, it didn't say ba, bag, but just plastic bans in general. The town, we're actually working with the town of Chilmark right now. They're interested in banning single-use plastic water bottles and, and also a single-use plastic sodas. Because, you know, if you just blend water, then will people drink soda? You know, you don't want to really encourage that. So, so that's something they're actually looking into. And then that's something that you guys can do on your own if you want to. Has been banning single-use plastic water bottles. And if you're interested in that, you know, I'm happy to ask some folks. Concord was the first town to do it in America.
I think that would be good.
If they're interested in coming over, you know, it, it's, it can be a challenge in some areas, banning single-use plastic water bottles. There are some towns on the Cape that you can't actually drink the tap water. You have to get it, you have to get it filtered. Nantucket, you guys can just drink your own tap water. And look, you know, we're, we're an island community. We're, we're an ocean community. And we've seen how single-use plastics have really destroyed our oceans and, and the kind of microplastics that are now in all the seafood that we eat and the like. And you guys understand sustainability better than almost any other community in this Commonwealth. So I, I think it's something worth looking into.
Question, does that mean the Stop and Shop and Cumberland Farms can't sell them as well?
Yes.
Because we've been advised that we couldn't do that previously.
You can ban sing, so a municipality, any municipality can ban single-use plastic.
The selling of it.
Bottles, period. And. So Concord, so if you go to Concord, they have the, like, the cartons of the kind of milk carton water bottles.
And do you realize those are really bad unless you have a way, a facility that breaks them into three different pieces?
Yeah, sure. And, and the, and the inside line.
They're actually worse than the others.
It's actually plastic.
I understand.
You know, that's, and you could, you know, you could probably ban that too if you wanted.
You would have to. That's sort of.
But Matt, to that point too, we don't have either of those facilities, so.
That's my point. So it's, it's sort of greenwashing, because I bought those, I bought a whole pallet, thinking I was doing the right thing. And then when I actually looked into it, I realized it was actually worse than the water bottles, because the water bottles could be, could be.
So, so one of the things Concord, and those are actually rare to find in Concord. But one of the things Concord has done is like, and again, this is all on the local level. This isn't state level. But one of the things that, you know, you should, that if a town was going to do it, what they should pursue is not only the ban, but also a campaign around how great Nantucket water is, right? And so you could do like a branding Nantucket water campaign and get people, a campaign about having everyone carry their own, their own portable water bottles. And then in Concord, you know, every restaurant and every business allows people to come in and just use their tap water to fill up. So I think you'd want to couple that, if you were to do it, you'd want to couple that with a campaign like that. But again, you know, something you guys have the power to do if you're interested in it.
And then what we're talking about. This is, way in January last year, at, at our request, the Department of Public Health came to the island and met with islanders on, on a number of issues, the suicide contagion we have ongoing here, off-island medical transportation, which we made some progress on, also looking at our island home. It was actually, the department actually suggested that they could provide a letter with guidance to the town as far as what sort of options you may or may not have, particularly as it relates to renovating the existing facility and how that would interact with existing DPH nursing, skilled nursing facility regulations. So this was their suggestion. We have sort of, we've been persistently pinging them on this. I have a, I probably have one of the best relationships with the Department of Public Health, any legislator, given that I, I used to work there. So I, I, I know quite, quite a bit about the agency. And I've been frankly, I'm frustrated that they haven't given us a response. My staff actually was just corresponding with DPH the other day about this. So I, I, I think, given that this was their suggestion, given that this is with the closing of the Taunton Skilled Nursing Facility, which is owned by the town, this is going to be the last municipally-owned nursing home in the Commonwealth. Really hope that DPH can give us some answers on this. Skilled nursing beds as a whole, we actually have a skilled nursing facility that just announced that it's closing in Brewster. So even on, on mainland Cape Cod, we continue to see a contraction of skilled nursing facilities. A lot of that relates to the relatively low reimbursement rate they receive. Most of these facilities and most of these patients are funded through Mass Health. And there's about an $80 a day gap in what they get from the state and what their costs are. I'm not telling you anything you don't know.
Ours, ours, we have a little bigger gap than that.
You, you folks would probably love to only have an $80 gap. So, so we're going to keep on this persistently, because I think that, you know, guidance from DPH, I think, would be helpful to the town just in, in, in looking at what, what your options can be with the site.
Do you have any, have you speculated why it's taken over a year?
It hasn't taken over a year. They're going January.
We've been, we've been, no, we've been asking for over a year.
But so since, since.
Since you, no, I know, I'm not saying you, but I mean, we've been asking for.
So since I asked, I'm, I'm not entirely sure. One might be wanting to, one is just staff time that they're. One might be wanting to, one is just staff time that they're, they're always sort of, this is a billion-dollar agency with ten units and a hundred programs and there's still a lot going on. I, I think too that they want to be really careful about.
Absolutely.
You know, what, what they put in, 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 in writing and what's unprecedented. But they offered this, so, and, and I don't know if, if, if they were a little too generous in offering it, but they offered it, and so we'll, we'll make sure you get an answer on that. I mean, I, if I need to be, you know.
Because we had, my recollection, we had a telephone conversation with someone there, and they didn't want to put it into writing, so, again, that was.
And then, and then us politicians got involved and they said they would. But we'll, I, I, I think my goal is to make sure that you folks get a response before the new year. And, and honestly, this, I've been very dismayed and surprised that it's taken so long, because usually they're pretty responsive to us. So I think, and did we cover the marijuana question you folks have? Did we get that?
I didn't, no, I think so.
I think we were just asking if there were any updates in the works that hadn't come out yet that you might know about.
No, I mean, we're, we haven't revisited the law. And the Cannabis Control Commission is still kind of issuing licenses. You know, they're behind, they're not as behind as they were. I mean, well, they're a new agency, but it's, it's certainly quicker than what happened with medical, which we weren't around for, but, you know, I think we can all agree it's a total, was a total disaster. So they're moving along, they're, they're moving more slowly than folks would like. We all thought that retail would open up sometime this summer. But now it's, it's looking like it's going to be here this fall. You know, there's no real legislative update there, the law hasn't changed in the past over a year now. And it, I don't, I don't anticipate any tweaks moving forward. There was, there was, there's been some complaints about the Cannabis Control Commission not cracking down on towns' community agreements with dispensaries in their towns, because some towns are really going kind of overboard in what they're asking from these dispensaries in certain, in terms of kind of financial support in the community agreements. The Cannabis Control Commission has said that they are not going to kind of come in and, and slap the rest of towns. So, so, you know, that's, that's kind of the latest update there. But not, but no changes, but if anything changes, you know, we'll, we'll let you know, if, if any pieces come up. I see there's a, yeah.
When you mentioned the transportation carve-out, there's another aspect of it. The Board of Health here is really concerned about the, I don't know if it's an exemption, but the carve-out that was given to facilities here for testing, because, because there's no local testing lab. They could, they'll be able to do their own, and they're not testing for certain things that we think are important. So would this carve-out or allow the transportation of the product back to a testing lab?
No, the carve-out allowed them to test on island, because that was, that.
Well, no, but, but they're, they're not going to have the, the level of a laboratory here that's they're going to have in a central location, because you can't, it's just, there's not enough.
Right. So what the Cannabis Control Commission did was, it's my understanding that they gave them.
No, I understand.
This carve-out.
Right.
And you're saying, can we not have the carve-out?
No, I'm not saying that, all I'm saying is that the inability to transport the product from here to a mainland testing site doesn't allow the testing for a number of elements and metals and certain, that, that we're, we have concerned about, concerns about. And you mentioned that, I thought you mentioned you were thinking about, you know, addressing the transportation because of the federal waters and air that.
Right.
Might have a.
So, so, yeah, no, I, I totally hear you. And if there's something that you want to, if you want us to engage the Cannabis Control Commission on asking them to, you know, send testers out here or something like that, we're, we're happy to work with you on that, but, but the carve-out that you're talking about.
I'm talking about a different car, yeah.
No, no, so they're allowed to do that?
No, I, I know that.
Because, because of the carve, the transportation carve-out, right? And so that's because you just, you're, you guys are not going to have the industry here to scale to support a testing facility. And so how do you have an industry here because you need the testing? And so that, that carve-out is actually to allow for testing on island. But we, you know, we're happy to, you know, work with you guys to engage the C C C on, on kind of, you know, if we can advocate for, for them to send over testers from off-island here or something like that. You know, I frankly, you know, we're happy to reach out to them and ask about that, if that's something you guys are interested in.
So we have a Board of Health meeting tomorrow, so we'll, I'll bring it up for discussion.
I have one quick question on, I know the medical marijuana, I think licenses are being transferred, ownership and oversight from D P H.
Yep.
To the Cannabis Control Commission. And are we sure that nothing is going to change from the C C C on medical marijuana? Or is it just a quick transfer and they're?
My understanding is, is it's been transferred, the staff have been transferred, the program's been transferred.
And nothing, there's no changes coming from?
No, not, not sort of significantly. You know, I mean, this is, this is creating a whole new regulated industry in the Commonwealth. You know, I actually used to work, I worked briefly on, on the medical marijuana piece when I was in public health. It's remarkably complicated. You know, and I think that, I've actually been really, you know, the Cannabis Control Commission, I think has done a lot more than I even expected they could do in the really short timeframe we gave them. But I think as specific issues, and also now you're at a point where if you do have, you know, facilities, both on the medical side and on the recreational side, need to have host agreements with the town. If there's any technical assistance we can provide, you know, the town, there's both a planning role there on the host agreement and also sort of the, the local health piece, you know, we're glad to assist and sort of route, route their attention to those issues as they come up. They have been very attentive, I think they actually came here, they've been to Martha's Vineyard. Several commissioners, two of the commissioners actually were former colleagues of mine, one at D P H, one in the Senate. So if there's anything sort of specific as hiccups come up, let us know. It's going to continue to be, you know, it, it, it's quite an implementation. I think what we've just, we, we both felt very strongly on it and worked very early to do, this was one of the first bills passed in the session in June twenty seventeen, was to make sure that the will of the voters on Nantucket and also on Martha's Vineyard, these are communities that voted in favor of recreational marijuana. I think, I think only Cambridge and then, you know, in my neck of the woods, Provincetown, voted at higher percentages in favor of this. So we're just trying to, to make sure the will of the voters are, are respected.
Thanks.
I think, on, on the other piece, you know, I think we'll just add, I think both of us have heard significantly of concerns from constituents in, in recent months as it relates to ongoing forty B projects on the island. And then specifically as it relates to the Surfside project, because the project is sort of en route, you know, that, that's between, between the town and between the developers. You know, and, and no sort of state action or legislation can impact that, because it is in, 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 in process. Where we have been focused, and we've actually been focused on this before, before we heard concerns specifically on this project, a project from, from islanders, is really challenging the state to look at how we're counting what's considered as capital A affordable housing on Nantucket, also on, on vineyard towns and on the outer Cape. The current way the state indexes affordable housing, the S H I index, doesn't take into account, for instance, covenant housing, doesn't take into account other workforce-related housing that's been looked at. We're working to ask the Department of, of D H C D, Department of Housing and Community Development, to do a study on this. If, 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 if asking doesn't get us results, we'll work to file legislation to mandate it. But broadly, I think when you look at both capital A affordable housing and the broader need that you have here, and getting and, and around the index that the state provides and, and around that ten percent, is certainly something that, that our office has actually been working on. A housing production zoning reform bill was talked about quite a bit in the legislature, also by the governor. Nothing materialized this session, but I expect that we will take up a pretty, you know, whether it's several smaller bills or a significant omnibus bill, both related to zoning reform and housing production. This is long overdue. I think we're going to have an eye, and, and my office has already actually worked on a series of proposals as it relates to, to housing and zoning needs that we have in our more seasonal communities that really have this, you know, those of us that really struggle with this out-of-whack real estate market that doesn't meet the needs of, of, of working families, that doesn't meet the needs of older adults. And so we're looking at everything from, you know, tiny homes that S H I index we looked at. You know, any ideas and thoughts that you folks have, please send it our way. This is the time of year when we are in informal session, when, when my staff has the time to, and Dylan's staff has the time to really sink our teeth into some policy solutions. But I really want to be prepared going in, and I think I intend in January when we convene to file legislation or a suite of legislation addressing housing concerns and challenges and a whole host of, you know, everything from tactical fixes to bigger, bigger pieces that relate to the needs that we have in our communities. If you look at the Governor's Housing Choices Bill, it left out most rural and smaller communities, including Nantucket, including a number of other communities on the Cape. So, so we've been really focused on these issues and will continue to be. But I just wanted to raise that, because I know that we, we've heard a lot, I'm sure you've heard a lot, and, and there's very legitimate concerns about the, the existing project. But, but that is, that, that, that is in, in process, and I know you folks are working on that.
It would be really meaningful to us if we could get some kind of credit towards our shy numbers.
Yeah.
For anything that's affordable in perpetuity up to the hundred and fifty, because we've made some significant progress in that area here. Also, for the workforce housing that we have initiated under our local zoning, to be able to get credit for that faster, because that's actually, that, that's really been a hindrance to us, to not have credit for the six F G project or for the Richmond project.
Yep. Would, would it be helpful, do you want us to ask to bring D H C D here to, to, to look at these issues? Or do you think that they, because I know the town has had communications with them for quite some time and before, before our tenure, what do you think's the, if there's anything you think that would be effective?
It's always good to bring people here to see.
And Crystal's been here.
She has been.
Fair amount, I mean, at least, at least once, maybe twice in the time I've been here. I know she's moved to mass housing. But yeah, so we could, we could engage them.
We should ask them to second their change.
Yeah, I've shared, and I've shared with, with both of you guys a similar idea. I think Nantucket, we've solved it, a lot of businesses have solved it. There's a lot more town, you know, employee housing through businesses here than there is almost anywhere else. And I think even if we got credit like a quarter percent or half a percent toward, you know, toward the shy, I think it would be helpful for the island, and I think it would, wouldn't really set a precedent, because there's not a lot of other places that have done it at the level we have. And I've, I've got a, I've got a fifty, you know, fifty employees, forty-five employees, I house thirty of them. And I wouldn't be in business without it. And, and that's, you know, more the norm than not out here now. And so I just think that should be given some consideration.
Absolutely.
You know, people here are spending, you know, thousands and hundreds of thousands of dollars to do the right thing, you know, so.
And Nantucket's been a, I mean, Nantucket is a model in the entire state when it comes to creative housing options. And a lot of other communities look to Nantucket, what Nantucket's done. And I have colleagues in the legislature that come up to me in session and ask me about certain Nantucket initiatives. And it's actually town, Somerville actually filed the housing back legislation that you guys have been sending up for years, because they've, you know, they've looked at a, a, a whole host of, of things that you guys have done here. So I think, you know, you all should be commended for the work that you do here, being a model to the state. And couldn't agree more on the shy list, shy list changes. NOAA Fisheries, HOE, okay. Yeah, well, so I see this note at the bottom. So, just as a little background on this, NOAA Fisheries is stationed in Woods Hole. It's about two hundred and seventy-five employees there, it's one of the largest employers on the Cape and Islands. They're going through this business analysis about moving facilities. They're, they have these really old facilities, actually gotten covered by the Globe a couple of times. It's really ancient facilities, they need to move. And it is very likely that they'll remain on Cape. But the, the, them moving has opened them up to folks from elsewhere wanting to, wanting to grab them and take them. And back, I think it was six, seven years ago, there was this large research vessel called the Bigelow. And Senator Reed from Rhode Island snatched that from, from Woods Hole and moved it to Rhode Island. And so this, this letter, which I wrote, is to all, you know, our federal delegation, and it's to the new Secretary of NOAA, who was appointed about six months ago. It's signed by every chamber of commerce in the region, including, including Nantucket, signed by the, the Selectmans, the, the kind of Cape and Island Selectionman Association, all the large institutions in Woods Hole, Woods Hole Ocean Geographic M V L, you know, literally the, the world's largest ocean research institutions about, you know, keeping one of the largest employers in our broader Cape and Islands region there. And, you know, it'd be wonderful, I, you won't be, this doesn't impact Nantucket as much as other areas, but, you know, NOAA Fisheries has come out here a fair amount, right? And that's, and part of that is their proximity to being here, and they're really easy for folks on island to engage with. And that's because they're right on the Cape. And so keeping them here is really important. I also just think it's important, and we do this at the State House, you know, every day, because there's eight of us who represent the Cape and Islands. And half of us are Dem, well, actually, let, only three of us are Dems and five of us are Republicans, but we work really closely together on every single Cape and Island issue, regardless of party affiliation, because ninety percent of issues impacting our local communities are not partisan. And we work really hard as a tight-knit group to advocate for the entire Cape and Islands, even if it's, even if things are outside of our, our district or our local communities, because there's like forty-five reps from Boston alone, right? So we really need to hang tight together as a region. And so, you know, it would be, it would be great if you guys, you know, could either, I, I think you've actually already signed on to this letter, or at least I've put you on it, because the Cape and Islands Select Board Association signed on, and so Ed McManus said you could list, you know, all the towns. But he, then he mentioned about doing, each town doing a separate letter. If that's something you'd like to do, certainly couldn't hurt, and I'd be happy to send language for that if Ed hasn't already sent that out. Just a little background there.
And just to quickly add, so Rita and I went to the Cape Cod Selectman Association meeting last week. Julian was there giving the update about the short-term rental tax bill, and this item came up. And the association voted to send a, a group letter, and then Ed, I think, did say he was going to send around a draft letter. I don't think I've seen it yet, but.
I can send it, because they're just sending my letter, yeah, I can send it to you guys, I'll send it to you.
And just adds that there were quite a few other select board members that were really asking for support on this and talking about how important it is for the communities in Woods Hole. So I would very, be very much in favor of signing that as a board.
And it was amazing to see you folks in these towns. That was real dedication. You know, we, we really should think about hosting, having, doing a meeting here, and we can, we can guilt, I would, I'd be glad to guilt the towns and the select, other select boards I represent on the mainland to come over. So please, glad to, glad to be enlisted in that effort.
There's been a couple requests for that, so.
Do we need a motion for that letter, or is it just going to be done?
I think by consensus, if you all just generally agree, that'd be great.
Any other questions or comments for the board or from representatives?
Well, just thank, thank you for.
Thank you very much.
The tremendous partnership. I mean, you know, so many of the issues that we tackle on Beacon Hill are implemented, you know, at the local level. And, and, you know, as you folks know, and as Dylan one knows through all the home rule work, so much of the wonderful things you're trying to do by the structure of how the Massachusetts Constitution works passes through Beacon Hill. So just really, really are, you know, I think both of us are really grateful for the partnership and also the, the real support and help you provide our staffs, actually both Pat Johnson from my office, who's my chief of staff, and Tom Dixon, Dylan's staff is here tonight, and really grateful for all that you do and, and the work and the collaboration you have with them.
Thank you both.
Very well said. I'll just echo that and just say it's, you know, it's an honor to represent Nantucket. I love it here, I love this community. You've been incredibly welcoming, and you guys have been terrific to partner with on a whole host of issues. The entire select board's been incredibly responsive and just wonderful to work with. And so looking forward to continued partnership. And our office, you know, we're here very often, we're here, you know, several times a month. So, you know, we're always free to meet, free to connect, just. So, uh, you know, we're always free to meet, free to connect, uh, just thank you for having us tonight, and it's, it's wonderful serving with you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we're gonna move back to citizen department request. We have Saichem's Path Homeowners Association, request for waiver of sewer privilege fees for properties within Saichem's Path Development. So, I'm just gonna...